How in this world do they understand anything that's going on down there? Everybody's chipperin' at one time and somebody's standing at the podium. And every so often, the lieutenant governor hits the, um, with his gavel and tries to bring some water. But after being done, they understood. They all did their homework, or they had done what they did, and people were just taking their time at the podium and having their ideas expressed. But when they rang that bell, boy, they were all in there because they knew it was time to come and make their vote and cast it as to what they thought was best or what their citizens had asked them to vote on. All of that said, even meeting with them at the State House in their office is not always a quiet time because they're interrupted so much. I think that we need to see if we can work out a setting that we can sit down and meet, but I also think it's, um, unique that they would ask to come speak to us. And I just think that it's most important that we start developing a relationship so that we can have a one-on-one or a council on two to have that dialogue. Do y'all know how, as a council, that Mr. Coleman feels on this flow control issue? I think you do from his comments tonight. But I also don't understand and don't haven't really sat down and talked to him because I work for him, if y'all don't realize that. So I'm not his advocate here tonight. I'm talking as an elected council member who has knowledge of what's going on with the process of my position and his position. So I haven't really sat down and said, Senator, as a senator, how do you feel about this issue? I have an idea because he was definitely vocal tonight. But just in that one bill alone, the seven of us need to get a copy of that bill and truly read it. Um, I'm not doubting what Mr. Rhodes has told us tonight, the other things we've heard. I'm not doubting what he said tonight. But I'm one that I feel that I can understand and read those bills and I want to see what it has to say and let me then be in a position to ask those questions. The big thing is, I concur with the motion that we actually need to invite our representatives to come speak to us. And if it takes 30 minutes, fine. If it doesn't, then we have another setting.
I would just, excuse me, but I want to be able to refute what my friend Josh Rhodes and Clint said. There's always three sides to every story. And I think him coming here with a room full of people was a deflection from y'all to me, and I understand that. But I welcome the opportunity to come to you and give y'all and y'all the other side of the story. And if I don't have that, then that speaks volumes.
Uh, Mr. Brown, I think you were next.
Mr. Chairman, um, I sit on the board of directors on association counties. And I've been listening to this conversation now for a year and a half. And, um, a lot of thought has gone into what Mr. Rhodes said tonight. He did a good job making his presentation. But there are two sides to everything. And what I was picking up from Mr. Coleman was that he wanted to express his side, and that's why I made the motion to allow him. Plus, you know, a house member and a senator, the way I was brought up are two people of high esteem. And if they want to come before a councilman to talk to us and express their views on certain things that were better this county, I'm gonna vote to allow them to do that. And that's why my vote is there tonight. But even though Josh did a good job, great job actually, and Mr. Coons would have done a good job. As involved as I have been in this over the past year, um, there are two sides to every story. So I'm looking forward to Mr. Coleman coming and giving his side of the story.
Okay. Ms. Mary Lynn, you got...
Thank you, sir. I'm a little confused, Mr. Coleman. You said at the get-go to talk to us for 30 minutes on where we are, where we're going with vision, and tonight to try to explain your side of this. And we always have a subject when we put anything on the agenda, who's gonna talk on what. And I agree with Mr. Perry that we need to sit with our delegation, which we've done for years and years, to talk. And we do have the intergovernmental meetings, but I do agree with Mr. Perry that we need to have time with them by ourselves. Now, if Senator Coleman would like to come talk to us on this to rebut this side, I have no problem with that for 30 minutes to give him the equal time or 30 minutes to discuss that.
When I signed up, I didn't even know Josh Rhodes was coming in here with that presentation. So, I mean, that's why I said where we are now to talk about what Barfield was with the investigation and all this other stuff. I didn't know he was gonna talk about flow control until I walked in and saw the stuff up on the, on the, uh, thing. So, I, you know, I would think in a democratic society that y'all would give another side and opportunity to show his side.
Absolutely.
That's all I'm asking. But if we do it in 10 minutes, 10 minutes aside?
Your topic, then, what you're asking would be to discuss...
On flow control, just so we can educate the public and y'all on what's going on.
Okay. And we certainly would give you equal time. I think that was in the future. We had just heard this at our conference, and this was why it was brought to us in full array. And so we've just gotten the full report too, and we have not known about this a long time before. So I would, you know, I think it's good if that's what Senator Coleman did to do this rebuttal for the 30 minutes, then I'm fine with that. But I do agree, the other information and the other discussions need to be private. Not private, but with, like we've done for years and...
Mr. Brown, would you modify your motion to amend it that the discussion was on the flow control bill?
No. That is what Senator Coleman wants to address only, I will. But if, the way I look at it, I wouldn't not let Mr. Coleman address another issue. If he wanted to address one that night, it often comes up. But if that's what the councilman would like, since it is, since he said it was strictly for flow control, then I'll change my motion.
Who signed into that motion? Would you change to, to read the flow control? Okay. Council, we now have a motion on the floor. And it reads that we give the Senate up to 30 minutes' time to, uh, to speak on the flow control bill, which would be adequate time, uh, that we gave Josh to, uh, to bring the proposal forward. Okay? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by the same sign. The ayes have it. Uh, Mr. Coleman, um, your, we will put you on the next agenda.
Thank you.
All right.
All right. Mr. Chairman, if I just may comment one moment, which Vice Chairman had kind of alluded to. And the statements that, you know, council don't get along with the town council, or we don't get along with the school officials, we don't get along with anybody. And if we're gonna have meetings where there's, and not gonna be a dialogue to find solutions, these meetings are all about red meat and inflaming and exciting people. Uh, I think that's, uh, that's a bad way for us to go. I, you know, the delegation should be willing to sit down with us and talk. We should be willing to sit down and talk with them and learn and share that information as well as any other elected official. I don't think we've done a good job in that on the past, but I see a change on the school board. Uh, that's different from where it was a year or two ago. I see people making some progress in communicating. And I think we do need to talk more with the delegation about what's going on in this county, because I don't think we have a real cohesive kind of conversation. And I'll just say what my grandmother told me, you know, your name will go places you never will. That you never will. And I heard what Mr. Armstrong said up here tonight, say, "We could beat up on one another, throw red meat, do whatever we would do after all the smoke cleared. When you leave out of Fairfield County, all you hear is negative stuff about Fairfield. Y'all can't get along, you can't this and that. We do one another end, and we won't hold up the private meets between us and have it out and then come back with the public for a solution. We're gonna air this out with red meat right here in front of everybody." So I don't think that helps anybody. So when we do that, as I say, our name will go places we never will. They'll know about Fairfield County up in Connecticut somewhere. Thank you.
Well, just to weigh in on that just a little bit, I don't, we keep hearing that we don't get along with anybody. That's the third time I've heard the senator say that. Just this past week, we had a two-and-a-half-hour meeting with the town of Wentzbar, did we not? We had a one-hour meeting with the hospital. I don't know of anybody that, that, you know, is approached by, by us or anybody else as far as that goes, because we, we have to deal with, with the towns. We have to deal with, with everybody. We have to deal with the delegation. Are they satisfied with everything we do? No. But are we satisfied with everything they do? The answer to that is no also. The fact that it matter is, so, uh, the thing of bringing, the thing to forefront here is that we don't get along with anybody. We have meetings with towns and, and everybody in this, in this community. So I don't know where that, I don't know where that comes from. I don't know if it comes from, uh, we, we have a former town council member sat in front of him many a times at the, at the town of Wentzbar. And he's been before this, this council before. So I don't know, I don't know where that comes from, that we don't get along, we don't try to get along with anybody. But I'm, I'm kinda like Mr. Marcharia. I don't know, I don't know exactly where that comes from or what the origin of it is, but the fact that it matter is, is fairly untruthful. Okay? We'll move now to, uh...
Mr. Chairman, if you'd like, I can reiterate if you'd like.
No, no.
You don't land. We don't have to. You'll be lying.
Just, just have a seat. Thank you. (Laughter). Oh, boy. Ms. Mary Gail? I'm gonna make an exception.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm going to the mic.
Yep. Just a minute.
Thank you for that exception. I have been in the other room, and as I sat and listened to some of the discussion that went on, and when I heard that there was discussion about the delegation and time being made or allowed for the delegation to come and speak to you, I could not let Senator Creighton be in this room by himself. We have had meetings where, and, and for those that don't know, I am a new kid on the block in the General Assembly. But we have had meetings, we have intergovernmental meetings. And I think that each of you that were there, I stood there and I said, "What are these meetings for? Help me to understand where we begin to discuss the issues that are before us for this county. Where do we begin? Is it in this meeting room?" Well, I'm gonna be truthful with you. And I did say, the first meeting, and I, I was looked at really funny from many of you that were sitting at that table, when I said, "We are known at the State, in Columbia for our lack of collaboration here in Fairfield County." And I resented that. I was embarrassed for that. Next meeting, moving on, I came back to this, to this intergovernmental meeting we had at Midlands Tech. And I said, "You need to help me, because the last time, we skirted a lot of things and at issue. At issue that we had were a number of things, and we still aren't talking about those. Where do we talk about those? Well, it turns out to be a dog and pony show. That's what it was. Well, I'm, I'm not in that environment or in that setting to eat meat and grease. I want to get to the meat of the, the business for this county." And I say to you, that environment, that arena, that, where we can take the gloves off if we have to in that interagency meeting, where all of us can come, and, and yes, main fences, and is it that we don't, that we dislike people that we don't, that don't agree with us? That's not it. That is not what it's all about. And I just, it saddens me to see that we have gotten to the part that we can't even handle a civil conversation at times. So I plead with you to, let's begin using that intergovernmental group meeting where all the players in this county, elected, all the folks who these folks have sent us. We're a very privileged group. I said that to you. We are a very privileged group to be representing folks in this county in whatever fashion, whether it's a district, whether it is as a house member or a senate member, or out in Jenkinsville or in Ridgeway. We are a select few. And I ask you to let's begin to act like people expect us to. So those are my, and I took a little bit longer than I intended to. Thank you for the exception again.
Okay. We're now down to 12B. Request to move regular council meetings for three months to another location. Do I have a motion?
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Councilman Marcharia.
Mr. Marcharia.
Mr. President. Mr. Chairman, I just, I just wanted to say this. I know one of, one of the members in my district did write me and asked me to vote yes for, for moving, but that, that member also told me that you need to resign. So if I move and go to the meeting, I don't know what we'd be talking about. And, uh, but I just want to reflect on the fact that eight or nine years ago, maybe a little more than that, whatever it is, we used to move council around to fire stations, to McCordus and School, to all the other places and every other, we had, we had to call the police. So we had people in there that didn't even know they can come to public meetings. "Oh, I can attend the county council." Now, even today, I run into people 15 and 60 years old don't know they can come to a public meeting. "I can come to that? Yeah, you can come to it. You've been living here all your life." But we went to those meetings, and folks would come there totally out of control, do not understand protocol and whatnot. We had to call that, that off. And we had some contentions here. Now, hopefully, we're more civil about how we talk, but it's been my experience, when we moved around to places like that, people had issues unless you want to wear a football helmet or something like that. We really took the blunt of a lot of aggression and anger with people who I know that probably didn't mean to be, that just didn't understand protocol, and they were angry about, about stuff. I am leery about moving. I mean, if they'll demand that when, when you have a real serious crime case in the court and people want to come, tell the judge, "Move out of here. Go, you open up a place where we all can come." I doubt they'd do it. I doubt the school would do it. I'm, out of my personal experience, I'm leery about saying yes, because out of the experience I've had, we run into some serious problems. That might not be the sense of the rest of the council people, but I just want to share that with the public, that calling police at all these meetings and people coming in and really don't understand protocol and, and it creates some havoc, because I just want to share that.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, piggyback a little bit on what Councilman Marcharia said, and I think I can just speak for some of the people here. It's not that, I, I don't think that they mean any harm or whatever, it's just knowing the protocol in a council meeting. And I don't think, I don't care if it's at, at the General Assembly, I don't care if it's at school board. I think that there's a protocol that needs to be followed. And I think that there are times when we may need to move meetings around because of the size of the audience. And I'll give you an example. When we were talking about the local option sales tax, and I think Senator May spoke about this a little bit earlier, but I remember calling Superintendent Green because we really wanted to move that meeting. I wanted that meeting to be accessible to as many people as we possibly could. So I think when we have an audience like that, and I talked to Mr. Green that night, it was probably 6:30, 7 o'clock, because we were trying to do everything we could to get that meeting moved. I actually called, um, our, our house member, Mary Gail Douglas. We were calling each other back and forth, trying to see if we could accommodate everyone that wanted to come. And we know the council chambers are not large enough for that type of meeting, but for whatever reason, we could not accommodate that meeting that particular night. And we did not have the necessary equipment for that meeting, which, which is why we could not have it at, at the school that particular night. But I do think there, there are requirements sometimes where we may want to consider moving those meetings. And one, for example, may be a local option presentation, because I know a lot of people probably interested. I'm a taxpayer, um, and in spite of what it may seem like, I mean, I, I care about things. I didn't get up here on county council because I just wanted to sit up here and deal with public, the public all day long. But I remember, I see my neighbors out there. There is no Cedar Rock Road if Duane Perry is not fighting for customer rights like you're doing right now. There's no Cedar Rock Road, because there was a landfill that was gonna go right at the end of it, and I had an opportunity to see how government worked in action, and I got involved. I mean, that's just how it works. So I understand how important it is for everyone to be heard, to be able to ask questions sometimes. So I do, I don't, I'm not in agreement with moving our, all of our meetings around for the next three months, but I do think that there may be some meetings where we need to move those meetings to a larger venue. So no for overall, but I am recommending that when we have something that is a really big issue, and there are a lot of people that are gonna be coming out, that we look at moving that meeting to a particular venue that would accommodate enough people that want to come out and hear what, what we're having to present or say. Mr. Chairman.
Hi. Mr. Chairman, I made the motion because I've been talking to my constituency. And the main reason they want to move the regular council meeting, not going out into every district. I mean, I was on council when the sheriff had to come to Jenkinsville because we felt threatened. But in this case, we've got people in the other room down here, we've got people standing in the hall as a firehouse. And if we can go to one of the schools where there's more room, more airspace, actually the council and the people in the commu, in the audience shouldn't feel quite as heated and got a little bit more room to kind of enjoy the meeting. And, um, and we can get something done. And, and that's my main goal, is to get something done. I'm, as far as moving to every fire station in the county, that's not my intent, because we won't have enough room there, because I think we got a group here who's gonna follow us wherever we go. So I, so I think the best thing to do is go ahead and put us in a large enough venue to, to let everybody have a seat. And that's why I made the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Mary Lynn.
Chairman, um, I agree with Mr. Perry and Mr. Marcharia. There have been times in our meetings here that Cheryl has had to go to her office and get reports or get papers for us and copy them for decisions to be made. And this is our headquarters. And I'm glad to hear that we're gonna move the 1-6 sales tax meeting to the schools, but I do think our regular meetings, this is where we meet. Town Hall with the town of Wentzbar meets where they meet. The school board meets where they meet. The senate meets where they meet. They don't change the venue at the senate just to accommodate the public when they want to come. It's first come, first served. And I think that that's why we need to stay here. But the main reason, may I, is because Ms. Brown has records in her office that we depend on greatly for things to be voted on and correct information. So, thank you, sir.
One other thing I may recommend, because I've, I've been in the, in the conference room back there, is that we may want to add a TV on that wall so people can actually not only hear, but they can see what's going on in that conference room back there. Because when we did the announcement on Thursday, there wasn't overflow crowd in, in the conference room as well on Thursday. First of all, council chambers filled up. Mr. Chairman, I know you were not here. Council chambers filled up, and of course, we did have to move people out of the council chambers to the conference room. And I think that, that entire presentation, I think Governor Haley did a phenomenal job on stage. And I think have, if, if the members that went council chambers actually could have seen and have been a part of that whole presentation, I think it would have been much more powerful. So one thing I think we should consider is putting a screen in that conference room now, so people can not only hear, but they can see what's going on in council chambers.
Mr. Fox, would you look into that, Fox? Ms. Roberts?
In the years I've served, I've never seen the interest that we have now from the citizens of this county. And I think if they are interested enough in what we're doing and want us to go to a larger venue so that they, the ones that choose to come, can come, then I think it's a legitimate and request that we need to honor. And if we have the magnet school that we could go to for a period of time, that's fine. Because like I say, the 1st of January this year, all we had sitting in here was staff. And it's interesting to finally see this place full and faces that are interested in the government. So I just feel that for at least a few meetings, we need to test it and see how that would do.
Vice Chair.
And one other thing, Mr. Fox, I think we're trying to vote on something without getting approval where we're gonna meet. I think, uh, one of the things that we may want to consider doing is, even for the local option sales tax, it has to be approved by someone with a school district. So we just can't move these meetings saying we're gonna move without first getting approval of where we're gonna actually have the meeting. So that's something we want to keep in, in mind, too.
Senator Coleman did, uh, excuse me, excuse me. Mr. Green did give Senator Coleman a letter that said that they would, for 24-hour notice, they would be able to, if they didn't have a conflict with one of their auditoriums, that they would work it out so that we could move to a venue such as that. As far as the chair's concerned, I don't, I, I'm not in favor of the idea of moving council for three months. On special occasions and like the 1-6 sales tax and that kind of stuff, I think we need to. Matter of fact, when the subject was brought up, I think I said, that's what we were gonna do. We were gonna call Mr. Green and try to get, uh, either the high school auditorium or the magnet school auditorium and have the meeting there so everyone that wanted to attend could come. I don't think, not just for the reason Mr. Marcharia addressed, but that is one of the, one of the reasons, but to take council away from chambers for three months, that's, that's a long time. And this is, this is the, the county seat for, for meetings, that's publicly known. Do we need to try one or two and see how they, how they, how it plays out? That might not be, that might not be a bad idea. But the thing of it is, there again, I, I don't, I don't think we need to, I don't think we need to spend a quarter, quarter of the year someplace else. I just don't, I don't think that's feasible. Ms. Kinnon? Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed by the same sign. Okay. The ayes have it, Ms. Brown? Okay, let's do a show of hands. Those in favor, raise your right hand.
Motion again, Mr. Chairman. The motion is...
The motion is that we move the regular council meetings for three months. That's the motion.
No one wants to make an amendment on that, rather than three months? I think the vice chairman said, "An occasion like this is very special, it's important. It might be a time we look at that and say, yeah, we need to make a move, make a move." Were we, by voting this way, are we denying that altogether, or are we making an exception?
No. We can, we can bring another motion right behind this motion, Mr. Marcharia.
Mr. Chairman, I'm in. My motion says up two, three months. That make everybody a little bit up. Let's see how it works.
That don't change. Up two, three months, that's still three months.
Let's vote on this, Mr. Brown, and then we'll, we'll, because we've already actually physically voted on it. And then we'll, we'll, we'll see if there's another motion that wants to float on the floor. Okay? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, by the same sign. Okay, now, is there another motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to move the regular council meetings on a trial basis at a maximum of three months. We can do a one month, and if it doesn't work, or two months, or three months, but let's give it...
give it a try.
Okay. Any questions?
I, I don't know if that changed, I don't know if that changed anything or not. I think you're saying the same thing differently.
I mean, if we don't agree with it after four months, then we'll be back to council chamber. If, if the tendency drops off, we don't need to be in a larger venue. If this council chambers is large enough, we'll come back.
I can, I can live with that, uh, if it's, if it's crucial enough for the public to hear that we have that meeting, but I don't, I don't expect we're going to have it every month or follow it around like that.
No, it's just those three months. And the only thing I'm wanting to do is test a larger venue. If the larger venue is too large and we don't need it, or this council starts doing a great job and we lose by half these people out here, then we come back in here, then that's a whole different matter. It's just, it's just depending. Whether I'm, I'm one of the six, but I would, what I'm saying is, let's just try it for up two, three months. One month, if we don't like it, then we'll come back. Or if we don't have another chance, we'll come back.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Mr. Chairman, I can, I can tell you that I have no issue with moving a meeting. Uh, for my fact, I am saying that anytime we have any issue of this magnitude and we've got these people, especially with the local option sales tax, which I think is a really big deal, that we should always have that, those meetings in, um, a venue that would accommodate the amount of people that will come out. As far as, um, saying that we need to do something on a trial basis up to the next three months, I'm opposed, uh, to, to, to that, uh, motion, uh, because I think that, I'm telling you right now, I will vote to move any meeting, um, where I think it's a decisive issue and I know the people are going to come out right now. I, I agree with Mr. Brown, I think the people are going to be following us around. But I think right now, from what I've seen, I don't have, I've been over to the conference room, maybe I can, I'll walk over and see, but I think we could accommodate. I do not think we can accommodate when we get to the local option, option sales tax because I think we're going to have more people to come out. For something like that, I think we need to move that meeting. But I am not in agreement with moving the meeting from council chambers. I think, I think based on what we've done, in my experience here, there are many times when we have to get documentation or we need things before we go, we go to executive session, uh, we have to con- we have to discuss contractual matters. I just think that outside of the local option sales tax, our meeting, once we decide and we meet with the delegation intergovernmental and we come back and put together a plan and then we get in front of people, I think we should stay in council chambers and then we should move the meetings to accommodate as needed.
Add a motion?
Any other thoughts? Not, we'll go to vote. All in favor, uh, raise your right hand. All opposed by the same sign.
You did a wrong one.
But, but the vice chairman, yeah, he didn't make a motion on that. I, I liked what he had said about that, but we already have a motion on the floor, so.
Well, we don't have a motion on the floor now.
You just voted. You just voted on that. Got voted on, yeah. But forward another, he made a new motion. Okay, I got voted down.
Now, Mr. Perry, you want to make a motion?
Absolutely, I'll make a motion. I make a motion that anytime we have to discuss a matter before council and we can anticipate that council chambers would not hold the citizens that will want to come out and be a part of that meeting, that we move it to a larger venue. But not for three months as needed, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second that. Ms. Robinson.
Uh, who will determine, um, when we're going to be there?
Because we have to make reservations.
Because, um, the constituents have already proven to us for over two months that we're overflowed. They're out in the hall even tonight in addition to the, uh, conference room. Uh, so who would make, um, a decision of when we're going to move? Like right now, um, all of the people that are here, this would have been a legitimate night to have a meeting. So that's what I want to know, is who makes that call under this motion?
The reservations committee. The council makes that decision. Who else? Somebody outside the council? What's the question? I, I, I think if, if, this is very important to the public, they've been turning out, I think they should have a right to be able to, to have this. I agree with Mr. Perry. The council needs to decide if this is significant enough, present enough, that we should move it and be able to hear the grievances of, of the citizens. And there, and there's going to be other issues where the citizen is going to have to, want to have a larger meeting. And we should accommodate that if it's significant like this to be able to do that.
Well, my question is, would tonight and the emails and the questions we've had, would that have been sufficient for this meeting to have been set in another location?
I think it's sufficient because we're addressing it. I mean, the emails have came and the requests have been made and we're making the decision on it, less than, less than something you're saying.
I sort of get from the motion that, it's probably at the call of the chair, with a big decision like 1-cent sales tax, we know we're going to another location. But for the last four meetings we've had, we've had enough people present to have been in a different location so we could have accommodated everyone who wanted to come. I would think with the people who are coming, the, there are a lot of folks who've probably been here since five o'clock so they could get a seat. And in that regard, I think there's probably not as many, but a lot of people who would have come had they known that there would be a seat for them. So they didn't want to have to just stand in the hall. I hate to think I had to stand for over two hours out in the hall, uh, for a meeting of this kind. So my question is, understand that you're talking, okay, periodically we'll do this, but who will make the call? Because the chairman can't call and poll us about our thoughts for a particular meeting. That's illegal. So who makes the call for me?
I'll now say this and be quiet, Mr. Chairman. I do understand what you're saying, Ms. Robinson. The chairman makes up the agenda anyway. And if any council member wants something on the agenda, you, you, you ask the chairman to put it on if you want it at the next meeting. If it's a meeting like this and you think your constituency needs to do that, you put it on the agenda and everybody votes. The chairman don't make that decision. He can put it on the agenda and then we all have to vote on it.
Have it communicated to the board.
Brown, Mr. Chairman, the only thing I've got to say is, I hate to disenfranchise any constituent from being involved in, in any of the meetings that we have. And as you just saw, people got up and walked out. And as they walked out, the seats were filled up with people who were standing in the hall and, and down in the overflow crowd room. So if that's the situation, if we are going to be, keep people out of this meeting room, then we need to have, either add on to this meeting room or find a larger venue that wouldn't cost us anything to move our meetings to until we, um, until either the crowd gets smaller or that we figure out that we do need to add on or something so we won't be disenfranchising anybody in Fairfield County.
Four P A system in the background.
Would you, would you, uh, repeat your motion, Mr. Perry?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that, that council decides at their regularly scheduled meeting and vote upon where the next meeting location is going to be that night. So the people that are here and as the emails go out, they would know far enough in advance where the next meeting location can be. And if this council sees fit, that the meeting should be at a larger venue, then we vote on it and inform the public that night for the next meeting, Mr. Chairman. That is my motion.
Okay. Well, that answers Ms. Robinson's question. Okay? Okay, and you second that? All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by the same sign. Ayes have it, Ms. Brown.
Okay.
Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Make the motion. The next meeting will be at, um, with the approval of the high school, or Mr. Green, will be at the magnet school.
Right? Got a motion, second, any discussion? You have none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by the same sign. Yeah, ayes have it, okay? We will. It was six and oh. The vote was six and oh. Okay, uh, we are now down to county administrative report, uh, Mr. Mill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, uh, council and citizens. Uh, one of the things that, uh, the staff and I have been, uh, working pretty diligently about was to, um, uh, look and remap the, um, structure of how council receives information and to be able to give you additional information to, uh, make, uh, good, uh, policy decisions. And so one of the things that we've done, and a tool in doing that is actually coming up with a new, uh, structure for council action request forms. Uh, we've actually sent, uh, that information out in the packet. I think you'll find that the issues that are coming before of the council, you'll find, um, a lot more information, just to give the public an idea of what's actually in the packet is. You'll have, uh, actually an action form that will state the purpose of what is being discussed and it'll have a, a background and a history and a discussion on that information. Uh, there will be a legislative and/or chronological history on that information. They'll also include, uh, any kind of financial or fiscal impact, uh, on that information, alternatives or options for the council to consider, and then a recommendation, which is actually, the role of the professional staff is to provide that information to the council as to what our recommend, recommendation is to you regarding the matter at hand. Also what you'll see is, you'll see a checkoff, uh, portion, uh, on the, um, the, the request of action that will go through the necessary county departments. For instance, if it's a procurement matter, of course, the director of procurement will sign off on that, or the finance director, or if in, in case it, um, covers our, our legal office. So all of that information will actually be, uh, before you as you take up, um, issues. Just a last point, uh, Mr. Chairman, if I could just have just 10 seconds, maybe 20, just for a point of personal privilege, just to mention to the council, and just so the citizens, because this was mentioned. Clearly, uh, I work for this county, I'm very, actually very happy to be here. Uh, this council, just like other counties, have challenges before it, but I'm very pleased to be here. I think my professional background speaks for itself. Uh, as far as any conflicts, of course, this council was made totally aware of who I work for, and of course, I'm a consulting, a company of one. I only have one, uh, employee in my company and that is myself. So that's who I answer to. But I'm very pleased to be here. Think we're about getting some, uh, very good things done and cer- certainly hope that we can be beneficial to, um, to the council. The first item, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, that we have, uh, passed the, um, council, um, action request form. The next item on your agenda is the Fairfield County Detention Center improvements. Uh, this is something I'll ask Mr. Davis Anderson, and this is what we'll do, this will kind of be the, uh, from now on, this kind of like the staff corner, to give you just kind of an overview of the issue that's before you and then you can ask questions of us. But this is a matter that the council had already approved funding for. However, before we move forward, we wanted to bring this back to your attention and need your approval to move forward to get, uh, certain specifications done. Ms. Anderson.
To council and citizens, I'm standing, I learned earlier that I be sitting over here and y'all can't see me, so I'm going to stand up where you can hear me. Uh, Fairfield County Detention and Improvements, what this simply is, is that the lock-in system that controls the patrol panels that keeps the inmates locked in, is getting worn and dated, uh, is getting to the point where some of the doors won't open, some of the doors open up at, at unopportune times, and some of the people up there, you don't still want to walk out. Uh, what we want to do is improve the system. Council has addressed this in the budget, uh, in May, when Ms. Lawson came and bought the control panel and showed you all the defects in it. Council has already approved, uh, $200,000 for the implementation of a new system. But what we are asking them to do tonight is to approve the professional services using Mean and Hunt to do the engineering process to make sure you get all of the specifications done so we can put it out for bid and get the best pricing for the new system in it.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Mr. Chairman and council, so, uh, in this request, what we're requesting is, and of course, as Mr. Anderson mentioned, uh, there was up to $200,000 that was appropriated for the project in the budget, so that's money already budgeted. However, we're asking council to move forward on the professional services fee, and this has been procured, uh, we do have an approved, um, vendor list, uh, for $43,520. What they're doing is actually going about the, um, the specifications in order where we can ready the stuff for bid, where we can bring exact pricings back to you, uh, through the procurement process. Our recommendation to the council is to move forward on this and we need your approval to move forward.
So move, second. Mr. Anderson, how long has the control panel been in, in place over there?
Uh, sir, that control panel's been there since the building, uh, was built, so it's roughly 14 years.
Any other questions?
Mr. Anderson, this is the same control panel that's being held together with chewing gum and chewing gum wrappers and.
Paper clips and pennies and that type of stuff to make.
So it's a safety issue more than anything. That's what Ms. Lawson brought to us to begin with because of the deterioration state that that thing was in. It was imperative that we, uh, that we make that move and redo that, that panel board. Uh, we have a motion on the second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, the ayes have it, Ms. Brown, six and oh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the next item we have is a procurement protest. Mr. Chairman and council, uh, our procurement code allows for, um, vendors and prospective vendors who do business with Fairfield County to challenge or protest, um, uh, decisions that are made, um, in our, in our, our procurement, um, process. Uh, we actually had actually a vendor to actually, um, uh, challenge, uh, one of the awards, uh, that we have. Um, I'd like for, uh, Ms. Sheila Pickett to come up and actually just give council an overview of this, and of course, we have to get your consent, uh, to move forward as is recommended.
Good evening, council. In your package, your action plan request, uh, the purpose of it is that the lowest bidder, um, was marked non-responsive due to the fact that he did not, he failed to list a mandatory requirement, which was to list the subcontractor for the investment, basement services. Um, the agenda was, before was issued, he did not list a subcontractor in that, um, his bid package, therefore, uh, marked a non-responsive, he could not accept his bid. Um, a letter was sent out to the vendor, he sent back, uh, dispute my decision. Uh, review panel was set up, um, review panel made a decision to side with purchasing, um, director and therefore, the vendor disputed again and, um, therefore you have it before you, um, if you have any questions.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
On this matter, and, and just to encapsulate what I'm taking to say it is, of course, went through all of the, the chain of command, uh, a review panel, a procurement review panel was established. It was unanimous decision by the re- review panel that the procurement, uh, code was adhered to. Uh, that recommendation, uh, came to me. I saw no deficiencies in the process nor, uh, with the procurement panel looking at that. Therefore, I recommend to you, uh, that you uphold the decision of the procurement director and we move forward with appropriate notification to all involved.
One question, Sheila, I'd, I'd like to ask you, when, uh, when those bids come in, do you have a checkoff sheet that you do each, each item?
Yes, I do. There's, um, uh, we go through the proper, um, documentation to make sure that they submit bid bonds, all the requirements that were submitted in the bid. Of course, there was a pre-bid conference, um, vendor was there attended, the, um, mandatory requirement was noted and the pre, uh, was read off in the conference, it's also noted in solicitation. Um, of course, I review, of course, uh, the engineer on the project, which is Davidson Florida, I have representative Chad Jones here tonight, um, certified the bid. So it's in order.
Uh, did we have a mandatory pre-bid?
No, it's non-mandatory.
Non-mandatory, okay. All right. Motion to approve. All in favor signify by saying aye.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by the same sign, the ayes have it, six and oh, Ms. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, council. The next item is, of course, when I came on board, there were several things that we decided in my discussions with the council. One was, of course, to sit down with each council member, to interview each council member, to find out more about you, and so we could establish some ground rules with what your direction for me was. We have basically accomplished that information. And also, meeting with staff and going around, seeing all of the county facilities that we have, one of the things that I'd ask our GIS department to do was to come up with a countywide map that listed every county facility that we have. And one of the things, what became really noticeable to me to really, in some of my first looks at some of our facilities, some of the things that we have are some very outstanding things that we have in the county. And so, one of the things that I would like to suggest to the chair and to the council is, is that we do have a county spotlight on each and every agenda that we have with the public. And the purpose of this is to talk about a specific department and how tax dollars are being used in that department. And the first one, and this is going on right now, is, of course, VC Summer is located, of course, right here in Fairfield County, with the new reactors coming on. This is a huge deal, of course, for us in the county, also for the state of South Carolina, and also in the southeast. So one of the things that this county has, and I know in my last tour of duty, if you will, in Richland County, of having different exercises where different stakeholders get trained regarding issues that could possibly come about due to challenges with the facilities. And so, we have trainings. And so, one of the things, and since the drills are going on now, I would like for the director to come, and of course, when we have this many citizens coming out, expressing their viewpoints about different things going on in the county, where they can also obtain information about what the county is doing to help protect them and public safety. So those drills, like I said, are going on now, and actually, they'll be completed by our next council meeting. So that will be kind of like our first county spotlight, but we'll be highlighting each and every area of the county, and I think the citizens and a lot of folks will be very interested to know different things that are going on. I'll just choose one more, but when I looked at our emergency management department, some of the equipment and the response times that we have here in a rural county of 24,000 people should be commended. I mean, there's some very good things going on, and folks should know those things as well. So, Mr. Chairman, with your approval and with council's approval, we would like to add to the agenda to have a county spotlight. This will just take a short amount of time on the agenda, of course, won't be drawn out no more than five or 10 minutes unless you have other questions about that.
Motion to add effect, Mr. Chairman. Second. That's a good idea. We, Davis and Mr. Huntley, had started doing some of those. We didn't have one every meeting, but that would be, that sounds like a great idea. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by the same sign. The ayes have it, six and oh, Ms. Brown.
Mr. Chairman, council and citizens, the next item under my report is the economic development public training session. If you can recall, I think this was at our last council meeting, I believe, when there were several questions asked about economic development just in general, and some of the information that we had on our agenda. It was mentioned at that time that we should have a public training session to further inform and educate the public regarding economic development in South Carolina, because there are various rules and regulations that govern how we go about doing economic development in the county, what we can say, what we can't say at different times during the project regarding incentives and how those things work. And so what we wanted to do was to have a, just a work session that council schedules in the coming weeks with the public of anyone who wanted to attend, and actually discuss that process, and so that folks have a better understanding. And of course, I would be remiss if I didn't take the opportunity, of course, to mention this about Element, of course, coming to Fairfield County. The chairman and I actually participated, of course, in Orlando in the actual conference that Walmart was having with a lot of its partners that are partnering with Walmart, and of course, Element, of course, they will be basically building flat-screen TVs right here in Fairfield County, all across probably the southeast or in all of the Walmart stores. So that's something that we can be very, very proud of. But another thing I wanted to mention about this is, is actually the part, the county's role in this. Of course, in order to be successful with economic development, you have to have, Tiffany, you have to have product, of course, to be able to offer to folks for them to come to look at your county. This is something, of course, we have facilities and structures for them to look at. This council has been very wise in investing in economic development product and property for prospective prospects. We have prospects now that are looking at our county. We tour and look at facilities that we have here, so it is very important. We have a professional staff person who is trained in economic development. Of course, one of the presidents of the company, actually, she was recognized about her work on the project and did an excellent job. And also, we're very thankful to Governor Haley and her staff and what they did in helping to land and bring this project here, as well as Secretary Bobby Hittin Commerce and his staff. And really, by having something like this, it really kind of helps you to land the next business once you have some positive momentum going. So your staff will be working diligently to kind of continue, hopefully, we're creating some momentum in Fairfield County, and have more product to be able to offer. And it used to be a day in economic development when you could sit around and say, well, you know, you'll bring infrastructure there a year from now, but you have to have it basically shovel-ready for people to actually be able to come to your county now, because there's some other communities somewhere in the southeast or in the country that already have facilities. So we are building that infrastructure to be able to position ourselves where we can be successful. Mr. Chairman, that was just an update on that. Chinook Road, this is a matter, of course, Chinook Road is a road that we have in the county, the county has a prescriptive easement on. The county, according to our public works director, has been providing maintenance on this road for a number of years, probably 20, 30 years at least, what I'm told. This road was approved by the CTC or the County Transportation Commission to be on the priority list to be paved. It is the last road to be paved under the old paving criteria, because this county council voted for a new criteria for 2014. There has been some apprehension with some of the landowners on the road of not wanting the road to be paved. However, there are equal interests on the road that actually want the road to be paved. What, I have spoken to several of the property owners, one of the property owners, I think I saw him earlier, Mr. Val Green, had asked for an extension of time to be able to contact one of the property owners to possibly purchase property. I also was able to speak to Mr. Bill Coleman, who owns property, who would like to see the road paved today. He felt as though that some of the information that was released out in the public, he thought that that was, it was a little unfair or not reported in a way that he would like for it to have been reported. One of the things specifically, he said he's had an interest on that road for a number of years. His ownership may have been very recent, however, he said he and his family has had a rental relationship for that property, where they hunted on that property for a very long time. He indicated to me that he had hunted on that property when he was in high school, so he's had a very strong tie to the land that he owns on that road. We have contacted law enforcement regarding some of the comments that have been made regarding that. The delegation, Mr. Bill Coleman, who actually works, same name, not the property owner, but that works for the CTC, is well aware of that, so law enforcement has been contacted. And I was able to also speak with Ms. Mary Gail Douglas from the delegation this afternoon, I believe, about it. So we're going to actually allow there to be a time for some further negotiation. However, if those are unsuccessful, then the County Transportation Commission and the county will move forward with the paving of the road, because it's on the priority list to be paved. The last item, Mr. Chairman, that we have on the agenda, this deals with economic development. Again, this is the water and wastewater infrastructure to serve the Fairfield Commerce Center and Walter Brown II Industrial Park. If you would turn to your, or in your packets, if you do have them. The purpose of this, county council has requested to, one, to approve the connections and associated infrastructure upgrades to provide city of Columbia water to the industrial corridor up to the Rite Aid tank on Highway 34, and two, to approve the administrator and economic development director to proceed with design and installation of wastewater infrastructure to support Phase 1 of the Fairfield Commerce Center and the speculative building while the Hazen and Sawyer team reviews the town's proposed options and continues to do its due diligence to find the best long-term water and wastewater solutions for countywide services. Mr. Chairman, council, this is a follow-up to the meeting that we had with the town of Wentzboro, I believe it was last week, my days run together here, but it was last week with them, based upon recommendations that were made in that meeting, and we wanted to bring those things forward. And I'd like for Ms. Harrison, if you would, in order to share with the council and with the public, actually, the routes of where these lines will be going, so there's a full understanding, there's been a full packet with backup information sent to the council regarding this information, so I'd like Ms. Harrison just to go over that with you, where we can further the recommendation, hopefully, for your approval. Ms. Harrison.
Good evening, council, members of the audience, Fairfield County citizens. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. So the first few maps that you will see are related to the water infrastructure that will be installed in order to bring the city of Columbia water that's currently serving Blackwood up to be able to serve the Fairfield Industrial Corridor. We have with us today Ms. Georgiana Graham and Mr. Ken Pardell from HPG. They're actually the engineers that has been working with the town of Wentzboro to come up with the solution to be able to provide the city of Columbia water to the industrial corridor. Okay, so this is the first of a series of maps. So again, the water is coming in from city of Columbia into Blackwood, you can see down here. Here's where the city of Columbia connection is. We're looking at Highway 21 right now. We're just south of the Blackwood High School right here. So the plan is to make this connection here and tie in a new booster pump station right here just south of the high school on Blackwood Road. The red line indicates a dedicated line to be able to push that water up, to have the pressure as necessary in order to get into Fairfield County. Okay, again, we're still looking at Highway 21 right here, just a little bit further north. This is Blackwood High School right here. You can see where the booster pump station is. Again, this red line is just additional infrastructure in order to get the pressure up to where they can fill the tank in Blackwood to be able to serve the industrial corridor. You can see the existing blue line here is the existing water line that's in place in Blackwood that's in by the town of Wentzboro. And then the last step in order to actually get the water into Fairfield County is, again, it's when you fill this Blackwood tank, follow the existing infrastructure that has been installed already, add a new pump station right up here in order to push the water up into Fairfield County, right here at the county line, which is right on syrup mill. So that's, those are the infrastructure improvements necessary in order to be able to serve the industrial corridor with water from the city of Columbia. So the next routing that we're going to talk about is wastewater routing in order to serve the speculative building out at the Walter Brown Industrial Park, as well as Fairfield Commerce Center. And I have with me this evening, Mr. Kyle Clampett, he's with Alliance Consulting Engineers. He's actually been, been working for the county since 2010. Alliance did a master plan for the county for service for Fairfield Commerce Center, which is the new 684-acre industrial park. So what we see here is, this is Fairfield Commerce Center, 684 acres. This is Walter Brown Industrial Park, which is the existing industrial park that was created back in the early 2000s. The proposed routing would be, number one, we have two phases here, we have to bring in the wastewater line from Commerce Center, gravity line here, onto Peach Road, and then force main it over and tie into a pump station actually in the Walter Brown Industrial Park. That provides us with the service to be able to serve Phase 1 of the Fairfield Commerce Center. Also, county constructed a speculative building in the Walter Brown Industrial Park last year. We just have a small tie-in that's necessary in order to be able to serve that speculative building with wastewater as well. So the request is to just do a small line, a gravity line to tie into an existing pump station in the back of the Walter Brown Industrial Park. And I'm happy to answer any questions related to the routing. Thank you.
Tiffany, explain to the folks, this water line that's coming from Columbia is not just for the industrial park. The town of Wentzboro has been serving, well, served most of the county, but they've been serving water to Ridgeway for years. And one of the things that this line will do, it will come all the way to 34 and up 34 to what we know is the old Rite Aid tank, just right in front of the old Rite Aid van, which goes back down Highway 34 to Ridgeway. So they will be actually, the town of Wentzboro will be selling the city of Columbia water to Ridgeway. It will be providing all of Ridgeway's water that, other than what they pump themselves. So it's not just for, not just for the industrial park, it takes care of the new industrial park and the Walter Brown 22, but it also takes care of the residents in Ridgeway and on Highway 34 and in that section of Ridgeway.
And this is, of course, in response to, the town of Wentzboro experienced a drought situation and had limited water, and went to the city of Columbia to be able to provide water to the Blackwood area. And this is to, as Mr. Fergens said, sort of the industrial corridor as well as the town of Ridgeway, which is right here down Highway 34.
Mr. Chair. Yes, sir. If I could, and just in the information that we shared with you in the packet, in the public information packet, is just to reiterate what the financial impact is for the water and wastewater. And of course, we received information from the town of Wentzboro regarding the information that we have in the packet with the studies that they had done. But the county share of the cost of the booster pumps and infrastructure upgrades to provide city Columbia water to the industrial park into the Rite Aid tank to supply Highway 34 area to the town of Ridgeway is approximately $627,135. That is, that cost, the wastewater, the cost of the wastewater infrastructure improvements necessary to serve Fairfield Commerce Center will range between $1.18 million and $1.248 million. The funding itself has, the county has had the foresight to look at funding these things through existing bonds that we have. The alternatives would be to coordinate with the town of Wentzboro to install the required infrastructure to provide that water, finalize the design and proceed with the wastewater infrastructure construction to serve the Fairfield Commerce Center, and to coordinate with the town to apply for DA permitting for the wastewater line to serve the speculative building. And one of the main things that I wanted to express to the council is this, the information that is provided is based on cost estimates prepared by engineering firms and based on their knowledge of the current conditions. The actual cost for each project will be determined through a competitive bid process after full design is completed. So this is not the last time, if of course, you direct your staff to move forward with this, that this would actually come back to you, for voter, to the public, with that information. This is just to allow us to proceed in order to get that information and then bring it back to you. However, from all of the plans that we've looked at and what we need now, this would supply the necessary infrastructure for us to position ourselves for new prospects for more industry and manufacturing in our community.
Can I ask a question about the maps?
Hold on just a minute, okay? Well, two things that we need, that we talked about with the town of Wentzboro. Town of Wentzboro has limited water, and they also have a limited amount of sewer space left. What the council went to, went to HPG and asked them was, what was that amount of water left, and what was that amount of sewer left? What we're trying to do is accommodate, short term, we have a, the town of Wentzboro signed a 10-year lease, a 10-year agreement with the city of Columbia for water, and that is what we call a short term, we being the county. We have hired a... Uh, we have hired additional, uh, long-range planners to look at water and sewer for the future. Uh, the town of Winsboro told us that, uh, or, HPG told us that, uh, we, we actually had enough, uh, sewer capacity probably for three units, which would be one in, in the spec building that we, that we have built in Walter Brown, two, and that would give us two new buildings and the new, and the, and the new industrial park. Uh, that will take care of us on the short run, but, uh, on the long run, we need to get, we need to be building out at the same time to, to bring those, uh, those amenities to the, to the new park. So, this will actually, this, with this investment, it will get us up to three plants, uh, the, the utilities for, for three plants, uh, the existing, uh, spec building and two new plants in the new park, and at that point in time, we will have to come up with an additional, uh, source of water and source of, uh, of wastewater. So, that's, that's kind of where we're, that's kind of where we're going with it, and, uh, we've been planning on this for, for quite a while, uh, took some time to get, uh, water from the City of Columbia, as you well know, uh, the town of Winsboro buys water from the City of Columbia and, and sells it to Blackwood, but it was not, until this last contract, it was not allowed to come into Fairfield County. But now, with this new contract, the water will actually come in and be used in Fairfield County, uh, which will help us a lot. Right now, uh, the reservoir is at full mark, but, uh, that's because we've been getting all of these ranges, one right behind the other, so you can't depend on that, we, we've already found that out the hard way. So, this, this gives us a, this gives us a source of water that we can, that we can hang your hat on and know that it's gonna be there. Um, there's a, there's a big line that comes up 21, uh, that would pump all the water we would ever want, really, uh, but, uh, that's, we're doing, we're doing long range, I mean, we're doing short range and long range planning, both at the same time, trying to, trying to get this thing off of the ground, and hopefully, uh, as, as, uh, Mr. Pope was talking about a while ago, uh, what we're hoping is we can get that spec building to move and get some employees in there, and with this, we will have, uh, at least two plants in the new commerce park that, uh, that we can put folks to work in there too. So, that's, that's what, uh, that's what the council's wishes are, and, uh, that's the direction we're headed off in, trying to get folks employed. Mr. Pope? Ms., Ms. Gav?
Thank you. I have two questions. Uh, if you've covered this, I'm sorry that I missed it, but, um, you mentioned that the water coming up from Blackwood would connect at Surrock Mill. Now, the water that runs on Surrock Mill feeds to people who are not in the town of Ridgway, will they start getting Columbia water? Will all those people who get that, who are not in Ridgway but who now get Winsboro water, will they be getting Columbia water?
Well, let me, let me explain it like this. Eventually, there's gonna be a loop system from, that goes all the way up, up Surrock Mill, that turns into Highway 34 at Kennedy Store, and can come back down 34 to Ridgway. Uh, but the beginning of that system is gonna be, and Ken, y'all correct me if I'm wrong, the beginning of that system is going to go to Center Creek Road, there'll be a booster pump set at the, the corner of, uh, Center Creek Road and Surrock Mill Road, and actually backfeed through the line that used to feed Blackwood, we will be actually be backfeeding through that same line to folks in Center Creek and the industrial park and, and on over to the Rite Aid Tower and, and down to Ridgway. So, it won't be new, in, in that section of it, there won't be new piping, it'll just be, we'll just be flowing water backwards from what it's been, been normally used for.
Where does, where is the cutoff from Winsboro water that is now coming in to Columbia water that will eventually come in, where will it, where will it divide?
Well, it could stop at Kennedy Store, or it might go all the way from Kennedy Store all the way into Ridgway, or it may feed Surrock Mill Road, that's, the, 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 the main logistic of that is the town makes more money off of their own water than they do the City of Columbia water. That's the, that's the bottom line. So, to sit here and tell you, I don't think Georgiana and Ken can even tell you how much water they're gonna be using because it's called, it, that's gonna vary. If, if they have a full pond, they're gonna, they're gonna be selling Winsboro water. If they don't have a full pond, they're gonna be selling Columbia water. So, I mean, that's, that's the best, I think. Ken, you and Georgiana, is that?
Okay, the bottom line is the cost, 'cause I understand that Columbia water is more expensive than Winsboro water, is that true, Ma?
It, it is more expensive.
So, how am I gonna know when I get my bill? Is it gonna go up and down?
No, no. Uh, you will, you will pay the same rate no matter whose water you're, you're using. Uh, that's, that's, uh, that's the only way they can do that, they can't, uh, the City of Columbia uses a chemical in their water system, the town of Winsboro used to use chlorine in theirs, I think, if I'm, was told correctly, at the end of this month, the town of Winsboro's gonna be trading over, so now the water can be co-mingled. So, you, you won't know whose water you're drinking, you, you may be drinking Columbia's water and you may be drinking Winsboro's water, and at some point in time, that's gonna switch off from, from time to time, but, uh, to tell you exactly whose, whose water line you're gonna be on, that's gonna depend upon what the town of Winsboro has available.
But we don't know which rate we're using, right?
Uh, it'll only be one rate, yeah, yeah, it'll only be one rate, it won't be, it won't be-
Two rates?
No, no, you won't, it won't have two rates, you'll have, you're-
They'll keep it at Winsboro.
And it won't be, and it won't be the Winsboro rate, I will promise you that, it's gonna be the, the out-of-town rate, but, we pay the out-of-town rate now anyway, so, but, uh, anyway, it's a good deal because we, we were all scared to death about the, the situation we'd gotten into, but, uh, with, with the town of Winsboro's help and these engineers' help, uh, we've, we've got it worked out now so that we can supply our industrial needs, we can supply the folks in Ridgway, we can supply the folks that's on the way to Ridgway and, and everybody in between, so it's, it's a win-win for all of us.
Thank you very much.
All righty. Ken, and you and Georgiana, is there anything else that y'all need to add to? Okay, Mr. Perry?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, you may just want to very briefly mention, we talked about short-term, but the long-term is the U.S. Corps of Engineers looking at long-term solution for the water here in the county. That process started about a year and a half ago, almost a year and a half ago, um, so we should be looking to hear something back from those folks, I would guess probably within the next six to eight months, I would.
Well, they, uh, they talked to, uh, Mr. Pope a week ago, and told Mr. Pope, barring any unforeseen problems, they would have us announce it at the end of the year. So, that's basically what we are, that's basically where we are with that, but I appreciate that, uh, but, Mr. Perry. Uh, any questions from council members? I know most of you were able to attend the other night, though we had a couple that wasn't, but, uh, with the explanation that Mr. Pope has in front of, it's pretty, and this isn't the first time we've, we've, we've looked at this, this is, this is actually about the third time we've, Ken and Georgiana's been in here before to explain what we, what we're actually voting on tonight, matter of fact, on two occasions, um, so this is their third trip to the, to the council, but anyway, uh, it's, it's nothing new to council members, we've, we've, uh, we've talked about it and dealt with it quite, quite some time now, so, uh, do, uh, do I have a motion in? Okay.
I'd just like to ask you all, with this decision, you, you know what size pump you're putting at county line now, correct?
Well, I needed to know, thank you.
Mr. Perry, I mean, Mr. Pope?
Yes, sir. That's okay. Uh, Ms. Chairman, just wanted to just echo again, of course, these proceeds would be coming from the, um, the 2009 bond, and also is just to make sure, again, the recommendation from staff is, is that council approve proceeding with, one, approving funding to install the water infrastructure required to serve the industrial corridor and Highway 34 east of the Rite Aid Tank to the town of Ridgway with the City of Columbia water, and two, to reaffirm the funding commitment to install wastewater infrastructure to, necessary to serve Fairfield Commerce Center and the speculative building at the Walter Brown 2 Industrial Park. And, um, that is our staff's recommendation to you, knowing that, of course, once we get the bidding information, that information will come back to council again and come back publicly, and any of the information that we have in your packet is public information as well.
Okay. Uh, y'all have heard the recommendation?
No, no, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, by the same sign.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Um, at this time, I would like to say something about Mr. Pope. Um, it's a great day in Fairfield County, I know, I'm copying Mrs. Haley, but, um, in 12 years, this is the first time that staff and the county administrator has brought forth actions for this council to vote on for each individual item being voted on in this county, this is well informed, and this is a great day in Fairfield County. I want to thank Mr. Pope for doing that, and Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. One of the things too, Council, that we talked about up there the other night, is the, uh, the next building, if we look in order of trying to get buildings prepared, because that's, Mr. Pope was right, people don't, uh, don't like to buy greenfields anymore and start building a building from ground up, 'cause it takes them two or three years to get in production, and, uh, this company, uh, that, that announced the other day, uh, they gonna have employees in the building making product in the, the first week in December of this year, and that's, that's almost unheard of, but, uh, and in the first year, it'll be, um, a minimum of 250, that's the first year, and, uh, so they, they're hitting the ground running, they weren't looking for a green spot to build a building on, they looking for a building to put employees in, and, uh, if, I was telling Mr. Pope, uh, on our trip the other day, that what I'd like to talk council into doing is to make the spec building the very next project, to go ahead once these, once these, uh, once this process has taken place, and we go ahead and get the water and sewer hooked up to the spec building, which gets it that much closer to a production building, and then all it'd have to do is go in there and retrofit what their, what their, uh, needs are, and we could have that building on the, on the market and, and, uh, have some employees in there also, so, uh, be thinking about that, that's, that's, uh, that's coming down the pipe very, very, very soon. Mr. Pope?
Ms. Chairman, just want to say one thing, I, uh, Mr. Brown's comments are sincerely appreciated, but just wanted to mention that the staff has been tremendously receptive to the suggestions, uh, everybody got on board, as a matter of fact, the staff itself was very pleased with wanting to provide council with additional information, and I just hope we don't get to the point where we kind of overload you with stuff, but we want to get that information to you where you can have it, and also, from the public standpoint, uh, there will be detail, and so, you know, we can have a better and more transparent communication with everyone, and so, the staff has been tremendously receptive to that, so I want to make sure that they get the shine that they deserve about that.
I appreciate you there, Mr. Pope. Is that complete your report, Mr. Pope?
Yes, sir, I think that's enough.
Okay, Ms. Bann?
Members of council, I don't have a report to them.
Okay. Uh, we're now at county council time, and thank for the, uh, I will announce that we, we always have executive session, uh, on the agenda, we don't always have one, we're not gonna have one tonight, but, uh, we always have it on there in case something comes up that we have to, that our attorney advises us that we need to go into executive session for, but, uh, I think, uh, now we're at, uh, county council time. Mr. Perry?
Yeah, Ms. Chairman, I, I just want to thank all the folks that came out last Thursday, I see my name over there, came out for the announcement of, of Element Electronics last Thursday, and, um, I saw, I see Mr. Schaefer that was in the back, I thanked him for coming out last Thursday, but it was a lot of folks that came out, and I think it's important, um, that I know we've, I believe in transparency, uh, you, Mr. Pope has been talking about that, and I think that's a good thing, and I think transparency happens when you have a full audience like this, and I've been saying it all along, it's good to have people come out, but it was also good to have folks come out and celebrate with us last Thursday, um, with the announcement, um, uh, Mr. Chairman, you were not here, uh, Mr. Brown was here, and, and I would tell you, that was a faux pas, I told him that we would have 500 jobs in 500 years, and, uh, the audience quickly reminded me, no, it was five years and not 500 years, but I was so excited, um, we've been working so hard to bring economic development to Fairfield County, and to finally have that come to fruition, we were very excited. For all the people that were here that celebrated with us last Thursday, thanks for coming out, and, and thanks for hanging there with us, thank you.
It was, uh, it was quite an honor for, for Mr. Pope and myself to be invited by Walmart, uh, down to Orlando to take part in that, uh, in that, actually was a two-day seminar, but we were only there that one day, and, uh, but to, to see the, uh, to see the folks that they had gathered, governors and, and the folks that they had gathered up for that seminar was, was, uh, quite, uh, quite amazing, really. Uh, Walmart has, uh, has put together a coalition to, uh, to bring as many jobs back to South Carolina and the United States as they can, and, uh, Walmart's dumping a, a ton of money into it, they had three announcements down there on the same day, of companies that either had been in the United States and left, or were like this, this, just, uh, company from China coming and, and here for the first time, but, uh, they're, uh, they, they said this was only the beginning of what they were gonna do as far as getting companies back made in the United States, and that's, that's their new, their new slogan, uh, products sold made in the United States, and, so it was, uh, it was, it was quite a, it was quite a show and tell over there, really, it was. Yes, ma'am.
Um, first of all, is Mr. J.R. Green still here? Or still contained?
Thank you, he's next door.
Next door? Ms. Cheryl, would you just announce, maybe, can he hear you?
Superintendent Green, if you're in the overflow room, the council would like for you to come over to the chambers.
I just would like to introduce him, he had told me he was gonna try to come tonight, and I think it's important for you to know who he is, and he may have a few comments, but I would like to introduce him, um. Hey, Mr. Green, come on in. I just wanted to introduce to our audience, and if you've got any comments, you're welcome to go to the podium, but Mr. Green's been with the school district, I think he's doing a really good job with the school district, and, uh, we certainly welcome him. I went to the conclave they had for the opening with all the teachers, and the kids and the teachers really react to him, and he's, he's doing a great job.
Mr. Chairman, I'd appreciate y'all to go to the, just to cry, I know it's been a long night, folks are ready to go home, so I'm not gonna be long with you, that's I know, ma'am, uh, but this is my second year here in Fairfield County, and I tell people that this has been my absolute best year in education, it's been an absolute dream. Going in better, I get nervous, I just stick, really, that well, you know, and our motto here is excellence to teamwork, you know that it'll take the efforts of us all to maximize the academic and personal potential of all of our students, and when I say all, I'm talking to county council, the school board, and mothers and daddies, and uncles and aunts, and neighbors, and pastors, and everyone, so, uh, you know, the school district wants to partner with you, uh, to change the trajectory of the, of the children of Fairfield County, so, so come by and see me anytime I have an open door policy, whether we have something good to say or something bad, that's fine, uh, so once again, it's a pleasure to be here, look forward to working, thank you.
Thank you, dear, I appreciate that. Um, Ms. Jenkins, I would like to tell you that not only would I have been late, I would not have been there because I had mistakenly put it on my calendar for Thursday evening, and I got a call saying they needed a quorum, and I was fixing to go in the yard and do yard work, so it wasn't that I was running late, but I did apologize to the two councils when I got there, but I wanted you to know I had mistakenly put it for Thursday night instead of Wednesday night. And, uh, Mr. Chair- And, Mr. Chairman, just to go back, we were talking about the number of county employees a while ago, and if you take 54 deputies off that number and about 53 EMS employees off that number, we have 165 employees or around that. So, I just wanted to make sure, and I don't think anybody wants to get rid of EMS services or people or the deputies, so I just wanted to kind of make that little note there. And, let's see, Mr. Armstrong, I thank you. Is he already gone, Tony? He's gone. Well, I appreciate his comments there because we all represent Fairfield County, and it's important that we all do work together and do the best, and you make an impression just as much as this council does, so I want you to know that. We're all in the same county. And then, Mr. Green, I was going to introduce, so I've done that. Thank you very much, and, Mr. Pope, we appreciate you being here, and thank you very much.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
I'd like to say something. Mr. Chairman, I certainly like to thank all the citizens for, for coming out and-